Like to call this meeting of the Lakewood City Council for Monday, March 1st, 2021 to order. The first item of business is the swearing in ceremony of Ms. Patty Bell as our newest council member. And for this, I'd like to invite City of Kent Mayor Dana Ralph to conduct the oath of office for Ms. Bell. Mayor Ralph.
This is great.
How about that?
I can hear now.
Can you hear?
Yep.
Okay. I, Patty Bell, do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington, that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington, and the laws of the city of Lakewood, and will do the best of my judgment, skill, and ability, truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially, perform the duties of the office of council member in and for the city of Lakewood and Pierce County, Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law. Thank you. Thank you all so very much.
So in rather just random, the unusual setting, we will switch back from the panoramic view of the podium. The first, we've used it in a year and go back to individual COVID. Yes. We will switch back when we're done with the night, the formalities here into a virtual environment that does not include panoramic shots. And I have to get out of the way. You. You won't get feedback. So now that we have a full council, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Right, we are having some technical issues. All right, now. Still coming out. The sound system. Let's kill it. We'll do everything virtually. Okay. All right, try it again. Okay, now it should work. You've got two hot mics there. Now we move to proclamations and presentations. The first proclamation is recognizing the city of Lakewood's 25th anniversary. Whereas on 14th, 1995, voters of Lakewood voted to incorporate the state of Lakewood. And whereas in 1996, the Lakewood City Council passed Resolution 95-10, setting the official date of incorporation of the city of Lakewood as February 28th, 1996. And whereas cityhood would not have happened without the hard work and dedication of many Lakewood residents who wanted to have local control of the decisions made regarding their city's future. And whereas over the past 25 years, we have seen significant progress in local planning and redevelopment. We have removed dilapidated buildings throughout the community and replaced them with thriving businesses. Today, you can use and enjoy new and improved parks, playgrounds, and special events, updated streets and sidewalks, lighting, and many new restaurants and businesses. Whereas we created our own police department to keep our community safe, invested in programs to support our most vulnerable citizens, and build a city hall for easy access to municipal services. We renewed and improved our partnership with ABLM and increased our presence throughout the state as a strong, stable, and livable city. And whereas our current vision is to be a thriving urban city possessing core values of family, education, and economic prosperity while embracing our diversity and keeping unity in community, matches the vision and goals set 25 years ago. And whereas today, the Lakewood City of Lakewood exemplifies what an involved citizenry can accomplish when they are equipped with a strong sense of community pride and willingness to provide service in the community where they live, work, and play, and who continue working hard to build a safe, healthy, and vibrant community. And whereas the city of Lakewood marks its 25th anniversary by celebrating all citizens, volunteers, businesses, community organizations, dedicated staff, and council members, past and present, who worked so hard then and continue now to enhance and exemplify the community of Lakewood. Now therefore, on this occasion of the city of Lakewood's 25th anniversary, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaim the year of 2021 as a year of celebration of the city of Lakewood's 25th anniversary and urges all citizens to join in the merriment dated this first day of March, 2021, Don Anderson Mayor. So give yourselves a round of applause, council members. And I'd like to give a big thank you to all those who have worked so hard 25 years ago for the third attempt at a corporation. And it's hard to find criticism at this point for what has been accomplished in the Northwood Corporation. But we have to keep the stage vigilant, excuse me. So the second proclamation is a proclamation recognizing Captain Rudolph Dambek as honorary city attorney. So, Madam Clerk, would you please bring on board Colonel Colonel Chung and Captain Dambek? Colonel, welcome.
Sir, good evening. It's great to see everybody.
Good to see you. We're, we're missing you guys. And gals. Captain Dambek, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
So to give you a little bit of background on this, somebody's probably filled in a little bit. I have had the opportunity as a mayor of a community connector to actually spend some time while people were qualifying for the EIB, very similar test, to be at the 2-2 ceremony for the first award of ESPs. And I'm a former Navy JAG. So I'm particularly impressed with your accomplishment. And we don't have keys to the city. We, we have a, you know, we're lucky to get a pen. But we can do proclamations. And I thought it was, we really enjoy our relationship with JBLM and especially the 2-2. We've got another lawyer on the council, Deputy Mayor Whalen. He was an Army guy, but he, he was, you know, nuclear artillery or something. He, he didn't, he didn't become a lawyer until later. So in recognition of your accomplishment, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas Captain Rudolph Dambek, United States Army, has dedicated his career to serving our country. And whereas Captain Dambek is currently serving with the 2-2 Striker Brigade Combat Team, Lancer Brigade, the city of Lakewood's distinguished community connector. And whereas Captain Dambek is an officer in the US Army JAG, Judge Advocate General, JAG Corps, whose motto is soldier first, lawyer always. And whereas on October 9th, 2020, Captain Dambek was the first ever JAG Corps officer to earn the coveted Expert Soldier Badge. And whereas the ESP is designated, designed, excuse me, to improve lethality, recognize excellence in soldier combat skills, and increase individual unit and overall army readiness. And whereas Captain Dambek is a noble and inspiring leader who is passionate about military service and who has brought credit to his profession. Now therefore, the city of Lakewood Council hereby designates Rudolph Dambek as honorary city attorney and applauds and congratulates him for his dedicated service and wishes him the very best as he continues to lead by example. Proclaim this first day of March, 2021, Don Anderson Mayor. Thank you for being an example to your soldiers and for serving our country.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like to say a few words, the mic's yours. You are after all a lawyer.
Well, well, thank you so much, Mayor Anderson and council members. This truly is a great honor. And, and just like getting through law school or the bar exam, it didn't happen overnight. Getting the ESP didn't happen overnight. I wasn't able to just wake up one morning and, and decide that I wanted to earn the Expert Soldier Badge. It came, it came through the help of a lot of people around me that I'd just like to take a quick moment to thank, you know, starting with my, my amazing wife, Amy. You know, keeping me fed, staying up late for those, those late nights of training, coming home, keeping me motivated when, when I didn't think that I could, that I could do it, and always just being there by my side. I'd definitely like to, to thank Colonel Chung for, for his leadership, for really creating a culture of excellence in the Lancer Brigade. And, and I don't know how many of you council members have had the chance to come down to the Lancer footprint, but we certainly invite you to come by anytime. And if you do, you're going to see a lot of, a lot of competition going on down at Lancer Brigade. You're going to see soldiers constantly pushing themselves to not just settle for being average or not just achieving the minimum standard. You're going to see soldiers competing against one another to be great and to be experts in their craft. So thank you, sir, for setting the conditions for me to have the opportunity to go out and train and, and earn this badge. I'd also like to thank my leaders on the, on the JAG Corps side for giving me the space, really. You know, giving me the, the time and the space and the bandwidth to put the time into training for, for the badge and, and testing for it. You know, still expecting me to do my legal duties and, and perform. But I'd like to thank the leadership there for, for believing in me as well. So again, this is a great honor. I really appreciate the community that surrounds JBLM, the city of Lakewood. And Lancer Brigade have a great relationship. And I think something that really builds that relationship and adds to it is, is the diversity of both the city of Lakewood as well as the US Army. You know, we have a chance to serve you as, as the mayor and council members and, and myself and Colonel Chung as, as officers in the Army. And we have a chance to serve with an amazing diverse group of, of people. And, and that really builds strength to, to both of our communities. So I think we complement each other very well in that way. And again, thank you very much for this honor and look forward to serving in whatever capacity that I can to continue to strengthen this relationship between the, the base and the community. And last but not least, Mom, if you're out there watching, I finally, I finally made it into public office. So hey, there you go.
Well, thank you. Colonel Chung?
Hey, sir. I appreciate it. So, you know, here in the last brigade, we, we talk about being a team of teams, committed to winning and dedicated to the pursuit of excellence. And, you know, we see that team of teams this evening, you know, as, as we take the time. So thanks, you know, Mayor Anderson and the entire Lakewood City Council, you know, being great friends. It's always awesome to see the relationship of a community connector program that's, that's flourished throughout the entire time that we've been here. And I know, you know, you've got roots with other striker organizations and with the entire installation on JBLM. This is just another great example where this organization has taken the pause to recognize one of our great soldiers. And, and obviously, as you've mentioned in the proclamation, becoming an honorary lawyer, lawyer for the city of Lakewood. And then, you know, for Rudy, it's actually, he's got a, I got a special place in my heart for him, you know, because I got a chance to pin cabin bars on him. And now seeing an opportunity, I appreciate him recognizing to be a soldier first and then a lawyer second or a lawyer always. But now he's really a more lethal and ready lawyer. And he's there to help support the, all our soldiers there in the Lancer Brigade. And I know as he transitions off to do some other things, you know, it's going to be awesome to watch from a different piece of terrain. So I'm super proud of everything you've done, especially being the first JAG officer. There's a lot of, a lot of great firsts and it doesn't come, come lightly. And it's led by, you know, leaders and officers like Rudy Dambek that are doing that. So I appreciate the, the opportunity to, to join you tonight. I'm super proud of the brigade, this relationship, and especially Rudy Dambek. So teams winning excellence sees the high ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel, and give our best to your entire leadership team out there. We miss them and we'll, we'll be back together sooner or later. After all, tonight's the first night anyone from the council has been in chambers in a year. So we're easing back in. Thanks again.
Thank you.
We now move to the youth council report.
All right. Hi, sorry about that. First, I want to offer my congratulations to Ms. Bell. I know that's, that's a very big deal and I know you've worked very hard to get where you are. So I appreciate your service to the city of Lakewood. And for that matter, I appreciate all of your service because I know that through, through COVID and everything, you've worked really hard to make procedures happen and ensure that they're enforced properly. So I appreciate all the work that you guys do. But moving on, my name is Josephine Kaiser. I'm a junior at Harrison Prep and I'm going to be giving you my school's school report as well as the general report for the council. So today we discussed with Brian, Mr. Brian from Humphreys about youth mental health. He's a part of the Lakewood Promise Board and we really focused on kind of the problems that they see and the priorities that they want to focus on, which includes looking at more affordable housing and youth mental health. And in ways that they can do that, they thought about building more houses and making sure that wages can accommodate those costs. We also ended up taking a survey. It was very short. It was about three questions, but I'll review what the solutions that we came up to as well as the causes of poor youth mental health. And so one of the questions was, what does poor youth mental health look like? And we surmounted that it's not necessarily gravitated towards one group of people. It's more or less about the severity of the condition of your mental health. Is it bad? Is it somewhat light? And though we think that those who have the condition slightly lighter are more or less to be kind of overlooked. And then we looked at, what are the root causes of poor youth mental health? And that could include a lot of people ended up seeing bullying. And it's not exactly the way it's always portrayed. Most of the times it comes in ways of exclusion and throughout the community. And I, a lot of us thought that that was more pronounced as COVID came because of all the isolation and quarantine procedures. We also thought that feeling overwhelmed and a lot of stress could negatively influence your mental health. And then because there's such a large number of low-income families, simply not having enough money can create a lot of stress and negative mental health as well. Because I know many students in my class and through other high schools as well, they're taking on a job to help support their family and they have a bunch of younger siblings that they also have to watch at the same time, which takes their focus off some schoolwork. But the final question was, what are some solutions to try to reinforce good mental health or some opportunities that we know of? And so in accordance with Superintendent Robert Banner, he is trying to implement this program called Three to Succeed. It focuses on managing stress, making better choices, and developing healthy habits. It circulates around students or staff and teachers being able to complement and build relationships with their students to help make their interactions and relationship feel more personal. There have been a lot of positive influences and Mr. Banner actually visited Virginia to go make sure that the stats were all there. So hopefully soon they'll be implementing that as well. We also realized that simply having a good support system, a growth mindset, and a welcoming community as well as social interaction throughout education would probably help to aid mental health as well as making programs and aid known in the community. We think that there are a lot of problems or a lot of programs are, are there out there that could help. But it's just not known. And so there are a lot of missed opportunities because advertising just isn't out there. So we're currently looking into how to make more of an emphasis over that, especially during the summer when students lose a lot of social interaction. But that was about it. We also gave some group reports, but we didn't have a high number of attendance today. So few people were able to report on their specific committees. But moving on, Harrison Prep is my school. And today we started our hybrid learning placement where you go from sixth, 12th grade, which is unique in our district. And so it's creating some chaos for everyone else. But the sixth graders, there were about 45 who attended today and a lot of the teachers were very excited. We keep, we kept hearing the bell ring. And that's not a sound we've heard in a long time. So it got us all pretty excited. We're all going to be trying to adjust to hybrid learning in the coming weeks. And so we've helped to put more posters up in the hallways to make students feel welcome. We have seven grades that are transitioning in this kind of very awkward, weird pattern. It's going to be difficult for both, both high school and middle school students, but we're hoping to keep up the connectivity between that kind of bridge that is made. We're really trying to focus on that, particularly in our leadership class and just keep into our studies while adjusting to this new pattern. Do you guys have any questions that I could answer?
Any questions for Ms. Kaiser? Trying to find my. I don't. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Kaiser. I appreciate your being here and giving us some discussion, particularly your, your comments around, around mental health to do that. I really didn't have a question, but I, but I had a thought that I wanted, if you could perhaps take back to the youth council. Is, you know, we're, we're at, we're at a stage of where we're, I think we can sort of see the end in sight on, on the pandemic where we are. But a, but a piece of, of getting to the finish line is to really build some enthusiasm for, for people to get vaccinated. And, you know, maybe that the, the youth council can have some discussions about how youth leaders can, can, can help encourage vaccination amongst both young people and their families in the city. And maybe see the value of it and not necessarily listen to, to, to all the rhetoric about many people sort of coming up with why not around it because of getting getting, getting many, many people vaccinated is a key element to putting this pandemic in our rearview mirror. getting many, many people vaccinated is a key element to putting this pandemic in our rearview mirror. So perhaps you could take that back to the youth council, and you might see if there's a way that you can be a part of that element of the solution.
Of course, sir. The only thing I would have to say about that is at school, I don't believe students are required to have vaccines. It's more based on choice and the family's kind of opinion on that. So trying to kind of sway students to see that side and take that side home to their families might create some friction. But we'll see if we can't positively influence that on our students without feeling as though they are forced to take that back to our families. So I'll see what we can do about that and if we can enforce it in our schools. But that is definitely a goal. I know that's very personal to me and to my family as well. So thank you so much. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Well, thanks you for being with us and keeping your participation level up as student leaders during the pandemic. And it's great to see that you're getting back into the class and hybrid circumstance. I know that's been a long and difficult road for the the school district. And they've been adapting admirably. So we will watch you with great interest.
Yes, I know. We're all looking forward to it. But thank you guys for the opportunity, and I hope you have a wonderful night.
Thank you. And so in staying on theme, our next report is from the Clover Park School District. And tonight we have School Board President Marty Schaefer.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Mayor Anderson, an amazing city council. I have to admit that I am not the first choice to be here this evening. It was supposed to be our vice president, Alyssa Pearson, but it just so happened she's had a recent addition to her family. And so we're so excited for her to have the new baby girl come. And I'm not sure how much information I'm supposed to share because it's all.
I heard about it already.
Yeah, okay, just making sure you are aware. But anyway, we we so much believe in family and community. And so anyway, I'm pitching in for Alyssa, who's just done an amazing job as our new vice president and been assuming more responsibilities as well. So it's been great to have her. I just want to acknowledge what an amazing report Ms. Kaiser did for not just Harrison Prep, but speaking so articulate for the Clover Park School District and even taking some of those difficult situations and seeing the depth of them around mental wellness and or mental illness and not in looking at from root causes all the way to potential solutions and to community engagement. Just fantastic to hear that kind of quality within our students. It's really impressive. And then even to see how she handled the last question of acknowledging that we have to navigate this difficult area maybe promoting the vaccines without forcing things and making sure that we do a good job of encouraging people, but not forcing them just so so well stated by her. I'm very proud of the students in our school district, and it really does make me very hopeful of our future. I also acknowledge that she talked about, you know, some of the complexities of being in our hybrid learning model that we're in. So as you know, that we work with the county requirement, state, and Department of Health and being able to move towards getting students back into the classroom. We've worked so hard at doing that and doing it in such a way that's safe for all people. And so when I say all people, we've, you know, we've got staff, we've got students, we've got families. And so it is it is complicated, but we've had our elementary kids back in the building since February 2nd. We've been moving there. And then, as was stated, the today, we actually March 1st began moving some of our secondary kids back in with middle high school. Coming in the high schools will begin on March 8th in terms of our ninth graders. And also, we are having our Clover Park School District virtual presentations on hybrid learning for high school families tomorrow, March 2nd as well. So we're doing everything we can to make sure we get information, that we get people prepared to be able to move forward who want to be in person, also accommodating those who don't feel comfortable and wanting to be virtual at the same time. So it is very, very important for us. We know that the highest level of learning takes place in the classroom. And yet, if we can't create safe environments and also meet the needs of each, you know, not just every, but each student, then we have to be able to offer the hybrid learning models as well. So we are doing that. But it is the goal, and I appreciate what council member Mike Brandstetter said, and that maybe there's some light at the end of the tunnel and that we will be able to move forward with an opportunity to get all of our students back into our classrooms once we hit the right numbers in the state and the county allow us to move in that direction. We're looking at the options in terms of six-foot social distancing, three-foot, what that means for capacity. And so we're doing everything we can to be safe and thorough and moving our students into a situation where it's in their best interest to learn. We have parent-teacher conferences coming up in the middle of March, actually 17th to 19th, and they are going to be virtual. But you know, and at the same time, it allows a lot of flexibility for the families to join the students and be able to connect with the teacher, you know, they can do it from work or home. There's there is some benefits to doing it that way. And so we're excited to be able to see our parent-teacher conferences continue and to be able to allow our students to be able to share from their vantage point how it is that they're engaging in education, even to the point of learning how to manage their own educational paths. So our goal is to see students see the value of education, being engaged as lifelong learners, and then even coming to that place where they want to be able to take responsibility in managing their own educational plan, not just through, you know, the K-12 years, but even going forward. In fact, we believe that it doesn't matter what age you are, you need to be teachable and correctable. You always should be in a situation where you want to learn and move forward. We are excited to also acknowledge that our Classified Employees Week is March 8th to the 12th. And so we wanted to celebrate our amazing classified staff members during that time. Classified employees include our drivers, our bus drivers, our paraeducators, the food service workers, secretaries. You can imagine the many more people that all are working sometimes behind the scenes. And sometimes, you know, they're the first ones to encounter kids and the last ones to drop them off. But our goal is to really celebrate the contribution that each and every one of them make to build, set our students up for success. So we just honor and appreciate them. I also like to acknowledge that we have a Lakes senior that was named the National Merit Scholar finalist. And this is a huge honor. The Lakes High School senior Sarah Bing was named National Merit Scholar finalist, and she plans to earn a degree in astrophysics or maybe astronautical engineering with a goal of becoming a rocket scientist and an astronaut. I mean, that's actually doable. These aren't just words. That's what happens when you actually believe in education and put that effort into, you know, making these dreams become a reality and having the resources of a school district and teachers and all this beautiful network that are working with our students. So we're so excited for her great job, Sarah. And the finalists are selected from a group of semifinalists who qualified based on scores in the preliminary SAT and National Merit Scholarship qualifying as juniors. So it's very difficult to make it this to that level. So we're very proud of her. We recently had our open doors students receiving their diplomas. And I don't know if if any of you were able to watch that. But in the open doors, that is individuals who have had to overcome a lot of different things. We talked earlier about some of the difficulties that some of our students face. And so a lot of the students in the open doors programs are exactly those Ms. Kaiser spoke of that are working to support their families. They have it a difficult, much more difficult than a lot of people. And so they can't always have the benefit of just graduating in a normal school environment. They're working, they're doing different things. And so the open open doors gives them a lot of flexibility. But we had 40 students that graduated. And to see them and to hear from them, and also our new legislative rep, Anthony Velez, one of our newest board members, did the graduation speech. And it was, you know, I almost hate to admit this because we all want to feel good about our graduation speeches, but it was the best graduation speech ever delivered in Clover Park School District. This young man just really does see the value and connects with students. And it was a beautiful thing, so it was just good on all sides. So we're just excited, not only for those who put the effort into graduate from open doors, but we're excited about our new school board directors, again, such as Alyssa Pearson and Anthony Velez, and them stepping up and exercising more areas of leadership. We continue to have free meals for all children in the in-person learning. So that's continued. And so we are appreciative of being able to make sure that every child and each child is able to be set up for success in some of the most basic areas such as meals. And so good job, school district, and then families, you can pick up daily meals at school and at the mobile sites. You can even order weekly meals on Fridays to pick up on Tuesdays or Wednesdays. We're doing everything we can to set our students up for success. And then March, a socio-emotional learning theme is managing our emotions. And so we've really stepped up with the socio-emotional learning and socio-emotional leadership in our school district. And we recognize that our students, when they understand how to really manage, not only just their emotions, but the soft skills in life, they they know how to collaborate. They have character, they're resilient, they're persistent. But these are the things that really do set us up for success. So academics is is one piece. But the the days of critical thinking skills in a silo are over. We've got to be collaborative problem solvers. We need to bring emotional energy to be able to build teams and then solve problems together. And so we we work very hard at that as a school district, and I'm proud of the fact that we will have different focuses and and understand that emotions, when managed correctly, actually bring energy and a sense of community. And with that in mind, I just want to say thank you, City of Lakewood, City Council, because we really did appreciate the meeting we had with you in our shared partnership. And we we are looking forward to looking for areas to partner, especially along the lines of equity as you asked us to consider. And so I know that Superintendent Ron Banner is going to be working and is working already with City Manager John Coffett. So, John, thank you for working with our superintendent. We know that we're going to find out the best kind of paths that we can both work on together so that we don't have to relearn things and that we can actually expedite our learning together. And it's just another beautiful example of collaboration and partnership. And so we're so appreciative of that opportunity to be a partner with with the city council. So Mayor Don Anderson, thank you for your leadership in that. We're very supportive of it. And then we also just want to be mindful of saying that we truly do appreciate each and every one of you. It is so hard to make a difference in our community. It's not easy, and I'm not sure that it's ever been harder. It's been it's been hard to be able to feel connected, to move people to working together. And if we ever needed to come together as a community, that time certainly is now. And again, so just thank you for what you do. We are so eager to partner with you. We just want to say we're on your side, we're in your corner, we're in this together because we genuinely believe that we are better together. So thanks.
Any questions for Director Schaefer? Well, thank you for coming tonight and bringing us up to speed and lending us your Clover Park students for Youth Council.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So so we now move to the public comment section of the agenda. This is when the public may comment on any matter pertinent to council, whether or not it is on the agenda in this COVID environment. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by virtual comment. Send comments in advance by mail or email to Brianna Schumacher, City Clerk at 6000 Main Street, Southwest Lakewood, Washington 98499, or bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically. Have any comments been received electronically or by mail?
Mayor Anderson, we have received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
But that doesn't preclude you from participating tonight's meeting if you'd like to. We take virtual comments. If you would like to provide live public comments, you will be need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by visiting zoom.us and entering the ID 86872632373, which is now appearing on your screen, or by calling telephone number 125321, my contact got blurred up, 2158782, which is also on the screen, I believe, and entering the meeting code 8687232373. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name or chosen identifier. Upon being called, you use the raise hand function. We'll call on you when you're unmuted. You'll have three minutes to speak. Outside of the public comment, the Zoom app will still let you raise your hand, but you will not be acknowledged except when you are called upon to speak, and you will then muted for the remainder of the meeting. So with that said, we'll give it a second here and see if any of our attendees tonight wish to make a comment. Let's see, first hand up is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Mr. Haugen, can you unmute your microphone?
Okay. Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Farmleigh of Lakewood, Washington. Am I, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? The clock, okay.
Yes.
Anyway, you know, I you make the national news regularly. This morning, it was something about the Supreme Court of Washington. No arrests for all all kinds of different drugs. But you add that all up with all the other stuff. You know, you got driver's license for illegal aliens. That helps move the drugs around. You got sanctuary cities. You got open borders now that Biden is president. This all helps the drug trade. The cartels love you. Then you got all these people living in tents. And they got debit cards, ATM cards. So the drug lords get all kinds of people in one area so they can stop there and pick up a lot of money. Anyway, tell you, you won't get out of this until you figure out that you need to fire some people, some some elected people. You can start with your governor and work on down into the legislature. But I noticed that the Democrats now are starting to beat up on each other. We got two governors, they're trying to fire. There should be a dirty dozen of governors that should be fired, like the one in Chicago. They're just no arrests there or no bail. In other words, all the killing that goes on. He wants to let the people back out so they can kill more. And for that, I think of Trump's statement when he said to the black community, what do you have to lose? And then he gathered a lot of black leaders in the White House with guys like Tim Scott, and they come out ways to help blacks. But of course, he wasn't welcome in every city, you know, because they don't want to keep their problem the way it is, so they got something to talk about. because they don't want to keep their problem the way it is so they've got something to talk about. But they did bring black unemployment and other minorities down to near zero. Anyway, Joe Biden, you see, that's very interesting. Democrat Party used to be for labor. And then Joe Biden just kicks him in the gut, the first thing he did. Well, I think Trump and the people he supports, I think that did great things for him. The Republican Party now will pick up a lot of black, a lot of blue collar labor and a lot of blacks. There's getting to be a lot of blacks in the Republican Party. Anyway, so long, see if you can get it straightened out. Thank you.
That's the only hand I've seen up. Madam Clerk, do you see anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Mayor Anderson, no one else has raised their hand to speak for public comments this evening?
We'll give it one more call, kind of like the auction. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment?
Mayor Anderson, we have Amelia Escobedo.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hello? You got me?
Yes, I can hear you. Identify yourself and say your residence, please. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Christopher Escobedo, and my wife is Amelia Escobedo. We live over here in Lakewood, by the park. By, you know, close to the Silicones. And, um, yeah, man, so I'm a Chicano. Chicano means, if you don't know, you know, like a Latino, Hispanic. We're all Native American, and this is our motherland. Like, I'm looking on the screen right here, and I see quite a few Europeans governing, governing Native American, Native American land. You know, and it disgusts me because, like, y'all just let that guy just come over here and say all these crazy things, saying Trump did this and Trump did that, great. Come on, man, that was ridiculous. He's been the most racist president in history, you know, blatantly. And everybody's getting behind him, but they're all, like, in my opinion, every racist should be locked up. You know, in Lakewood, we should not be ran by millionaires. You know, show me a Native American millionaire, you know what I mean? And let them run this city. But of course, we know there's not many of them, and we know why. Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, how do y'all think that you're going to get away with this? You know who the, do you know who the judge is? Do you know my Lord Jesus Christ? Yeah, he was once oppressed with his people too. And he took down a whole kingdom, didn't he? With love, with love, because I love the good people of this city. Hear what I'm saying? I'm from Texas, but I love the good people in this city. I love the good police. You know what I'm saying? We've got a couple of bad ones that need to go. But for some reason, we know what the reason is, y'all are keeping them. Y'all are keeping killers and, you know, terrorists, in my book, because I'm a Native American. So, you know, there's been a lot of European terrorists for many, many years. But I think, you know, that y'all should think about stepping down and getting a Native American to take your place. You know, I'm pretty sure there's Native Americans everywhere, you know, millions of us with, you know, education and the knowledge to raise, you know, and, you know, basically, serve our people better. We want to bring about world peace. We know the truth of the world. You know, the oppression and suppression has been going on all around the world. But this won't be the last year for me. See y'all later, guys. Much love.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Anyone else wishing to make public comments?
Mayor Anderson, we have Julian Wheeler.
Mr. Wheeler. Floor is yours.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
All righty, just, I'll make this quick because my audio tends to break up. I guess happy March, happy International Wheelchair Day. Congrats to Patty Bell and her appointment to the council. And I want to announce that next Tuesday, March 9, at nine o'clock, on Zoom is our Pierce County Accessible Communities Advisory Committee meeting. We can help expedite funding for accessibility projects. Thank you very much.
I don't see anyone else wishing to make public comment. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Seeing none, I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of February 1, 2021. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council study session of February 8, 2021. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council special meeting of February 9, 2021. D, approval of the minutes of the City Council special meeting of February 10, 2001. E, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $2,953,553.90 for the period of January 16, 2021 through February 16, 2021. F, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,452,357.17 for the period of January 16, 2021 through February 15, 2021. G, motion number 2021-12, accepting a donation from CHI-Franiscan Health in the amount of $8,200 for the Lakewood Farmers Market and One Drive-In Moving. H, motion number 2021-13, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Northwest Cascade Inc. in the amount of $628,628 for the construction of the 100 Main Street Overlay Project. I, motion number 2021-14, authorizing the execution of a contract with AHBL Inc. in the amount of $715,000 to develop a new JBL Ungrowth Coordination Plan. J, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, one planning commission meeting minutes of February 3, 2021.
Thank you. I'm removing motion number 2021-14 for the consent agenda. Is there any other item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I moved.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Bulkey, that we adopt the consent agenda list. Item I is for any further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay, the motion carries. We now go back to motion 2021-14. Madam Clerk, has the amended motion been distributed to council?
Mayor Anderson, the amended motion was emailed to council this afternoon.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion, hopefully just on the amended motion. There was errors to the allocation of amounts.
May I move to accept the new addition?
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Ma, seconded by Ms. Farmer, that we adopt motion number 2021-14, version two, in the amount of $643,500 is distributed. Is there any further discussion? Favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. Now move to the regular agenda, any unfinished business come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
Any new business come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
So we move by reports, two reports by the city manager, and Mr. Coffield seems to have a laundry list tonight.
Yes, Mayor, and I apologize about motion 2021-14, by the way. And I appreciate your flexibility in addressing that this evening. Well, actually, first of all, I would like to call upon our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dodsworth. And she has four items that she would like to update you on. The first is the city's 25th anniversary update, followed by a special events update, given we continue to operate in the COVID-19 environment. So she wants to give you an outline of what's planned or potentially planned for a number of city events as we look out, primarily into the near future and into the summer. Also, an update on the South Sound Probemural that we're working with some folks on. And then lastly, Ms. Dodsworth is looking for the city council to appoint two members to represent the city council on the public art selection committee. And if you recall, this body received a presentation and had a discussion with Ms. Dodsworth and Ms. Martinez about a month ago or so. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Dodsworth. And then I'll be back with some additional updates after that. Ms. Dodsworth?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, City Council, and welcome, Councilmember Bell. We're excited on your appointment and looking forward to working with you this year. I'd like to start with showing you a quick video that we created on behalf of the 25th anniversary and kind of mirrors nicely with the proclamation. And then I'll go into an update regarding the year of fun. So, that's a video that was created to go with the proclamation or could be used on our website or can be used for various presentations. It's three minutes long, so we thought it would be effective. And we're excited about, you know, being able to summarize our 25 years in a short period of time. But what I wanted to do is just to kind of quickly kind of go through where we're at and what we're planning for the next year on behalf of the 25th anniversary. So we are here talking about our great city of Lakewood, a land of lakes and prairies. And just to begin with, you know, we want to honor the Nisqually Tribe today. So one of our many, of the many indigenous groups that hunted and gathered and celebrated on these important lands for over 10,000 years. And this land and all the land in Washington is occupied, and it's been stewarded by these folks for years and since time began. And our friends are still here, and they're still connected to these places, and we want to honor them. And we're really thankful for the relationship, the strong and strong relationship that we have with the Nisqually Tribe and how they contribute to our community. So, once the, you know, white hunters and settlers came here, we had lots of different organizations utilizing our community. We had the Hudson Bay Company, and of course, the US military. And then farms and dairies were created, schools started, and then houses were built around the lake, large mansions as well as little shacks that were at some point summer homes but became year-round residences. So, of course, we started having businesses that were created to support our community. And then, of course, in 1995, the citizens have voted to become a city. We became an official city on February 28, 1996, and it made us the second-largest city in Pierce County and the eighth-largest city in the state. And so, of course, as they say, the rest is history. So when Lakewood started, you know, people wanted to become a city because they wanted more control regarding making their own decisions. But a big part of it was creating a better quality of life for the people who lived here and played here, worked here. And so, one of the things that we heard constantly at the beginning of why we want to become Lakewood is we needed the unity in our community. And we saw that, we heard that, and in this day and age, 25 years of community is still important. And so what was part of the founding fathers and mothers and brothers and sisters really is relevant now. And I mentioned, I think, when I started sharing this project with you last year or last month, was that our youth council was talking about how that was so important. And so, you know, we're really excited about having that be our theme, the unity in community. And you'll see that throughout all that we do. So how do we celebrate that? How do we brand it? How do we market it? So we started with the city of Lakewood, and there's our original logo to the left. And as you can see on the right is our current logo. And then when we celebrated our 10th anniversary, they utilized both of these formats in a 10th anniversary logo. And then when the 20th anniversary happened, which was just five years ago, the council had just approved their strategic plan. And it was a really dynamic document that talked about how important our past was, creating our present, and then really what we're striving for in the future. And you could see that in the logo. And we really wanted to create something for the 25th that was really unifying the past of the last 25 years, what we've done and where we're going. So we want to proudly share, this is going to, and we wanted something modern that would show what we're doing. So we have this great 25, it's got this montage of all these pictures from the early days till current day with many of our partners and activities and events. And then you can see the banner on the bottom. And then building community, we talked about lots of different taglines. And building community, because it's an active word, it's also, we've done so much to build our community, our friends and neighbors and collaborations, as well as our business community, our streets, our infrastructure, our parks. And so we really thought that was a great wording to use. And then, of course, we have our simple version that we can use for some of our branded things that we might not be able to get all of those pictures in color. that we might not be able to get all of those pictures in color on. So we're able to, so you can see the unity is highlighted in building community, and we'll emphasize that throughout. So some of the things that we plan to do is, of course, we started off the first of the year with our MLK celebration, which was virtual, and the theme was, of course, unity and community. And that was a wonderful event, and I know that you've all had a chance to see that video. And being, last month was Black History Month, we really emphasized that throughout the month of February as well. The next thing that we did is we had an art contest, and that was working with our Arts Commission. They did an art contest, and the theme was unity and also why we love Lakewood. And then, of course, city doesn't do anything by themselves. We collaborated with the Sister Cities Organization. And so we had the art, the contest for first grade through adults in Lakewood with different categories. But then we partnered with Gim Hay, and so they submitted artwork. And again, students all the way to adults and utilizing the same theme. We had about forty-three entries from Lakewood and about forty-three entries from Gim Hay, so that's pretty exciting. So we were gonna sell, we were gonna share the, all of the artwork with you tonight. But when they submitted the art, they also created a statement regarding the theme and what it meant in collaboration with this, with their artwork. So all of the Gim Hay statements are being translated. So it's taking a little bit longer, and we'll be putting the flip book together. So we're gonna be presenting that to you on April fifth at your council meeting. And also, everybody in Lakewood that entered, if you didn't win a prize, and we were working with Twin Star Credit Union, who provided cash prizes for our, for our artists in all the different categories, everybody will be entered into a drawing and will pick the winner of the raffle prizes at the April fifth presentation for you at council as well. The next thing that we want to do is to do a highlighted feature in our next connections. And whether we do it in our next connections, which may be April-ish, we have a brand-new communications manager joining us in the city. And so, so that may be in April-ish, or we may do it right before the announcement for the September event, which I'll share with you in a second. But we're really gonna focus on, you know, Lakewood, what made it special? What are the game changers during the last twenty-five years? And then we'll also be having a webpage, and so we'll be doing things like have our video on there, talking about updates to events, maybe talk about some partnership projects that might be happening out there. And then also, we've already submitted some articles for the historical newsletter, the school district newsletter. So we're gonna try and get that word out, not just in our own publications, but also in our partner publications as well. So some of the game changers that we're thinking about highlighting and featuring, things that you saw in the video, but things like, of course, incorporation and building our city hall, our police department, which really made a major change in our community. Of course, losing our officers was a big impact on our last twenty-five years. The sounder train and transportation, new roads, new businesses, new parks, those are all really important. And so if there's specific game changers that you think about, that we're really, you believe were really impactful for the city, we'll be gathering that information, and we'd love to hear from you on that as well. Of course, we couldn't do a big party in February, on the February twenty-eighth, which was our big anniversary day because of gathering and all the other issues that are happening. So we're working on a big twenty-fifth anniversary party on the plaza, at the Colonial Plaza. We've created this great space for our community to gather. And the idea will be a big party, celebrating our anniversary. We'll have music and food and games, retro games. We'll probably do it between like four and eight, five and nine, that period of time, so that we can be date night, family night. Come in and then we'll have those lights come up and, of course, make it a special time on the Colonial Plaza. And then throughout this year, we'll be, so first of all, we have this great stakeholders group that's come together. It has city staff, but also we have representation from the Historical Society and the Chamber of Commerce, the school district, the colleges, lots of different folks that are, the library, working with us to just, you know, the city collaboration has been such a big part of everything that we do. So we're working with all these different groups to help us celebrate and also come up with some great ideas. So some of the other things we'll be doing is doing some discounts and specials at local businesses. We really want to honor our local businesses. So it might be twenty-five percent off something, or something costs two dollars and fifty cents. Or if your birthday, if you're twenty-five, on the city's birthday, maybe you get a free donut. So anyway, we're working with our business community, and we'll be working on having just some special twenty-fifth anniversary specials, discount coupon books throughout the year. And then at our celebration on September, at the September celebration, we want to have a big display highlighting our businesses, but also have twenty-five ways to win on the twenty-fifth anniversary party. And then raffles, spin the wheel, we're not quite sure how we'll do that. But we'll honor our businesses, and then they'll also be donating prizes and activities so that people can, everybody likes free stuff. We're gonna be doing a scavenger hunt, a Lakewood scavenger hunt throughout the community. And we'll be utilizing maybe a downloaded form where you would get a hint or a clue once a week. And then you would, it might be a little picture, it might be a clue, and that people will have to figure it out, and they'll be on a scavenger hunt that'll be working again throughout the community. Businesses, Historical Society, parks, different places to visit and get people in and around the city. And it's something they can download, they can do virtually, they can do online, again, meeting the people where they are. I'm working on a community mural, the school district's taking the lead on that. But LMCC has donated funds, the community colleges have donated funds, the city will be providing resources. And it's gonna be a mural created by students, and it'll be with equity and unity as the theme. And it's gonna be done in these different panels where they'll all be screwed together for one cool mural, but it can also be taken apart and utilized mobily, a mobile mural, so to speak. And so we may be able to post that and have that again at the twenty-fifth anniversary party. A time capsule was suggested, we were thinking it'd be awesome to do a time capsule at the Colonial Plaza. There is a time capsule at city hall, it was put in when the city hall was built in two thousand and one, so that's not due till fifty-one. But a time capsule, we're thinking a twenty-five-year time capsule at the Colonial Plaza that would be opened on the fiftieth anniversary of the city. And so we'll be working throughout the year on what do we want to put in there? With the idea of working with the youth council, they're the ones that have to remember that we have it. They're the ones that need to open it, and so we'll be talking to them to make sure that there's some fun stuff in there. Agents of Discovery is a mobile app, and so that'll be another opportunity to download some fun games you can do on your mobile device and learn more about the city and its twenty-fifth year, as well as doing that at the commemorative event. Storytelling, the library is celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary this year. And so the library will be doing a walk-around, it's called a story walk. And so we'll be doing it at Fort Silicon and at Springbrook. It'll be in two different languages, English and Spanish. And the book they picked is called The Big Red Umbrella, and it's all about coming together as a community. It's all about everybody's welcome and there's room for everybody. So it's a wonderful story, it'll fit in perfectly with our theme of unity, and again, partnering with our library, and then during trivia and things like that. And then, of course, we have to get some swag. Those will be some commemorative items that we'll use for prizes, we'll use giveaways at the event, and another way of acknowledging our twenty-fifth anniversary. Anyway, we're excited about this year, we're thankful for your support, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions or take any of your ideas regarding some of the great things we want to do to celebrate the twenty-fifth year.
Thanks, any questions for Ms. Dodsworth?
Don?
Mr. Bulkey?
Yeah, I'm, Mary, I'm gonna throw you a little bit of a curveball. It may not even be a fair question, but you've been with the city for a long time. I don't think it's all twenty-five years, started right out of high school or something, I think. What achievement are you most proud of?
I've been here nineteen years and a little change, so in July it'll be, I think, twenty years. I would say I'm most proud of the partnerships that we have in the community and, of course, Fort Silicon Park. I think that that is such an amazing jewel in our community, and we've been so fortunate to do so many improvements to that park with the help of so many people. But I have to say, one of the things I was most impressed when I started with the city, and I am still to this day, is the sense of community. The way that, the culture of this community is, is that if you ask someone, they will help you. But most of the time, you don't even need to ask, once they hear what's going on, they just want to come and be a part of it. And there's just so many great partners with the service clubs and the businesses and the different organizations. We're really, really lucky in Lakewood.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one.
Mr. Whalen?
I have another curveball, but it's about the celebration and the opportunity to maybe do a small city-sponsored fireworks display, perhaps grounded in the town center, so it's safe over asphalt, that kind of a thing. And my thought there is twofold. One, it would probably be supported by a lot of businesses, so it wouldn't have to be a city totally funded thing. And second, it might give us the snippet of what a city-sponsored fireworks show could look like. So down the road, when we think about doing the Fourth of July maybe differently, not saying we should or shouldn't, but it's an opportunity to have a really cool thing to kind of end the evening of the twenty-fifth celebration activity. I think it would be kind of a fun thing, you could light it off in the town center, for instance, over the asphalt. If you could get the requisite permissions, which I know you're wonderful at doing these partnership things, Mary, you can make it happen.
Well, the city council will be learning more about fireworks show options. I believe it's the April fifteenth-ish council meeting, we'll be presenting you with some information on that. And so we'll have, we'll have another more rich conversation regarding that, I think, next month, so.
Very good.
Great idea, I'll put it on the list.
Perfect timing for September, I love it.
I would just note that JBLM has a substantial wealth of experience in holding major fireworks show Right. in, inside an improved area without water. So they've managed to arrange it by their stadium, and they have fire trucks waiting in the background. But they've somehow got it figured out as to how much space you need for how big a program. And essentially, it's, it would be a school site. They're gonna be roughly equivalent to the parking lot at, at Clover Park High School.
Right.
Anybody else? Ms. Farmer?
I wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Dodsworth and her amazing staff and the partnerships that they've built. I attended a meeting last week of the twenty-fifth anniversary committee, and there were folks from the library and from the, from West Pierce Fire, and everybody had great ideas and economic development was, was involved. And Cameron in particular, who's been doing a lot of the graphics. And so I just thank you so much for doing so much. This is a whole year's worth of events, like, yeah, we can do twenty-five weeks of this. And I'm like, are you twenty-five weeks? That's like half a year, okay. There's so much energy and passion in that group, and I'm just super impressed, thank you.
Mr. Brenstetter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mary, thank you for the, the presentation and the, and the outline of where planning is going. Particularly glad to see that we've managed to get both some robust participation from, from schoolchildren and Gim Hay. And I did note the city manager forwarded us the letter from the, from Gim Hay's mayor congratulating us on our birthday. One suggestion on your game changers, if you could perhaps look at a game changer that reflects our relationship with JBLM, and it could be the creation of our Community Connector relationships with the Sparta with Dave, the four-two and two-two.
Good idea.
Well, the city being a catalyst for creation of the South Sound Military Community Partnership, both those, I think, would fit that definition.
Thank you, anyone else? Thanks very much, Ms. Dodsworth, we always enjoy the show. And I'm sure you've got some pent-up energy waiting, waiting to put on the show, so looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Coffield?
Actually, Ms. Dodsworth has three more updates to provide the council.
Just can't get enough.
She's just getting.
Just getting started. Well, it's great because some of these will have a little crossover. And, and being that you're so, most of you are also familiar, and I know Councilmember Bell has participated with some of our activities, you're all real familiar with what we're doing. So our next conversation starts on page ninety-three of your packet, and it's talking about the special activities and events that'll be happening in the city of Lakewood over this year. And so just if you, if you're on that handout that's on page ninety-three, I'll just kind of start at the top, and I'm going kind of chronologically throughout the year. So of course, just to remember that, you know, we did do the MLK event, and it was a virtual event. We are working with the MLK Committee, just to give you a heads up, is that next year, if we're able to meet and gather, as we hope to, we're looking at probably doing an in-person event that does have some virtual elements associated with it. So we're kind of doing a little hybrid combo event. And we are looking at the Saturday of MLK weekend, you know, time to be determined. But, you know, a couple of years ago, we looked at doing it closer to February, to Black History Month. But I think that people were really used to that weekend of MLK, and so we'll probably be looking at going back to that weekend. There's more work happening on that. Of course, tonight, tonight we did our proclamation, we showed our video, and this was sort of the kickoff to our, our twenty-fifth anniversary year. And so that's happening, and again, just promoting it throughout the year in lots of different ways. We've already talked about the art contests, and again, we'll be doing that at April fifth, doing the presentation of a flip book, which will be a way of being able to see all the art. That's a lot of art to see in a short period of time. And so we may just emphasize, or we may highlight the people who won the different categories. And then, but we'll be sharing all of that with you on the fifth, both the Lakewood and the Gim Hay art. It's really, really exciting and amazing, amazing what they came up with. So that's exciting to see that. Parks Appreciation Day is April twenty-fourth, that's always the last Saturday, pardon me, the fourth Saturday of the month. And it's usually nine to noon, we always do events at, oh, five or six different sites. So we'll probably be also doing spring cleanup and get ready for the summer events. But we'll be doing them a little differently, we'll be doing kind of family pods, and there'll be assigned tasks in certain areas, we'll have things laid out so that they can just show up and do their job, as opposed to what we've done in the past, which has been much more large group activities. But we're, we're gonna continue to offer that activity and give people a chance to get outside and help spruce up the parks and make them good for, get ready for the summer. Farmers Market, massively huge, successful, wonderful event. Everybody loves the Farmers Market, it's gonna continue to be on Fridays this year. We're gonna start May twenty-first, which is earlier than we've started in the past, but the people want it, the vendors want it. So we're gonna start it early, and we have funding to do that as well. It is an essential service, so we're able to do that. The layout that we, you know, last year, we did it many different ways. We did drive-through, we did layout long, we did layout short, we did it up and down on a box with a box. This time, we, the last several weeks of the market, the layout worked really well, worked for parking, worked for folks. We were socially distanced, we emphasized masks, it was really safe, and we're gonna continue to do that this year. But that starts on May twenty-first, which is a Friday, and it'll go through September twenty-fourth. That's nineteen weeks of market from two PM, starting an hour earlier, till six thirty PM. And then six nights during the summer, we'll be doing drive-in movies. We did those last year, very successful, sold out in a second. We're getting sponsorships for all of them, we hope, I think we're up to our, to four sponsorships so far, we might have five out of the six. And that makes it really affordable for people, and it's safe, and it's family-friendly. And we're thinking about different themes, like, you know, if we did Pirates of the Caribbean, you dress up like pirates or have your car decorated like a pirate. And anyway, so we're looking at fun things like that. We can do a hundred and sixty cars per event, we do it on the baseball field, and it works right following the Farmers Market. The food trucks stick around a little longer on those nights, so people can come, park, go get some food. One year, we got a sponsorship and everybody got a bag of popcorn, so that was fun. So we'll continue to do that at Fort Silicon Park. Our summer camp program, we are working on, last year, we were able to do it in a smaller format. Childcare, of course, was an essential service, we wanted to provide that. We were able to do it at the Senior Activity Center because schools weren't open, that's generally where we do it. So we're really looking at where we might be able to provide this. Schools really aren't sure they're going to allow use this summer because they're still just trying to figure out how to hybridly get their own kids in there. And the senior center's currently being utilized by the county for court, that might change, so we're working on it. But we are working on, we may change it and do more of an environmental outdoor camp. So, you know, we're gonna just use the resources that we have. So you know, we're going to just use the resources that we have and do the best we can. So we're working on that. Um, we probably will need to decide uh in early April how we're going to do that because of the time it takes the higher staff and to get those things organized and to prepare it for a safe start. Generally, it's late June through um mid to the middle of August is when we do those activities. Lifeguards is another one of those programs that we've done. Last year, we did not have lifeguards. We couldn't do lifeguards just because it was early COVID and we just didn't have the resources. This year, um, we're deciding in April whether it's a go or no go again. And the reason is, is that we don't have a feeder program in Lakewood. We don't have our own pool. We don't have, you know, where you have this group of guards that you can transfer between facilities. We really are starting from scratch. And last year, uh, we were not able to get certifications and they couldn't, they didn't do training, right? All the pools were closed and nobody could figure out how you could safely teach someone to do mouth-to-mouth resuscitation when you can't touch anybody. So um, so most of the pools are just starting to open. They're minute, they're limited with numbers. Um, none of our staff would be certified. We'd really be starting from scratch. And so that program will be determined at the first of April, whether we're going to be able to do lifeguards at American Lake and Harry Todd Park. Those are the two sites where we would do that. And we run a seven-day operation. It's generally through the months of July and August. Um, summer concerts, we're going to be doing seven concerts this summer. And that again, we know we can do with the guidance that we have now. If we don't slide backwards, which I really don't think we will, I think people are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. I think there'll still be limitations with numbers that can gather. But um, right now the number is two hundred. That's what we can use. Um, we usually have between two to four hundred people at our concerts based on the band and what's happening. So we will be able to fence off the area by the pavilion. We'll be able to limit access by reservation or however we decide to do that. And um, you know, if people wanted to get behind the fence and watch, that's on them too. But um, so we are planning to do a seven concert series, be on Thursday nights, six thirty to eight P M. At the pavilion at Fort Stilicon Park. And that again is based on the, on the current guidance. If, if something was to change dramatically, then we would, we, we would cancel it or make modifications based at that point. But we feel like we'll be able, we will be able to do it this summer based on a current situation. And it probably will just improve a little bit, maybe a few more people. Summer Fest, that is a pro, a pro, a huge festival that we have. Uh, Summer Fest has a uh name recognition. It has uh expectations. So um, Summer Fest is one of those activities. We talked about, you know, do we want to do a modified version, which would be kind of more like a concert in a park? Do we want to do something small, but people are going to think it's Summer Fest if we offer it? So we're really going to be making that decision in the middle of March, whether it's a go or no go. And um, we don't want to tarnish the reputation of the event. We don't want to, we want to manage expectations of our community and our guests. But typically we have forty to fifty thousand people come to that and it's a big deal. And it takes a lot of time to plan. And although we have a good um skeleton model of activity, uh, it takes a phenomenal amount of time to coordinate all of those different elements. And so um, so you'll be hearing more about that. Um, but we're really kind of getting, running out of time. And you know, if we can only do two hundred people, even at a couple of waves, that's a lot of money and a lot of time for a small event. And even if it changed, like currently right now, if you had a hundred thousand square feet worth of space, which we really don't, it's three hundred people. So again, you're not talking about a big change in numbers, so. Uh, and that's going to piggyback with the International Festival. The International Festival is done with our sister cities and that's um over by the pavilion. And although it is kind of also a designated area, um, we would be making that same decision. We wouldn't be doing one without the other, just because they'd be at the same time and you're, you're, you're dealing with the same kind of issues. The night market that we've been talking about at the Colonial Plaza. Um, we're working on how we might do that. We might do a couple of special events this summer, like maybe a food truck rally. We're kind of putting those pieces together. Um, the issue is, is again, if we're limited with numbers and you can't invite people to come. Um, you know, for our, our, um, twenty-fifth anniversary, that's going to be a big, a special thing. But if we were to bring vendors down and only two hundred people come, they're never going to come back. And so we really want to make sure that, that um, the events that we do down there are going to be well-attended, um, quality events that we can be proud of. And so um, so we, we won't be doing regular night markets down there, but we are considering a couple of special things, like I said, like a food truck rally or some other things to get people down there and utilize that space. I've already talked about the twenty-fifth anniversary party. It's going to be a great, wonderful event. Um, we, we're looking at ordering um like the Farmers Market tote bags that you get, everybody. It's a very hot commodity. We're going to be, I think, ordering a silver bag with a blue logo on it. So it's better for our silver anniversary and then we'll order a pack of extra ones to have for the twenty-fifth anniversary party. Truck and tractor days in October, um, again, from noon to three. The event hours will be determined based on what we can do and how we can set it up. But as you know, we're super creative, try to be nimble and flexible. And we will um be providing um a fun activity out there in October for the fall harvest. And then our Christmas tree lighting and parade of lights. You know, this year we did the reverse parade, which was phenomenally successful, more successful than we expected. But um, we hope to do a live event as we've done in the past. And if we do, that'll be happening on December fourth. If we can't, because of whatever's happening in the universe, um, we would probably be looking at a virtual event um on the, uh, December eleventh. So like a reverse parade or something like that. With the lighting happening earlier, like we did this year with the mayor flipping the switch at a council meeting, so. So that's, that's what we're planning for our major programs and special events. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or um gather more information for you as interested.
Hey, questions for Ms. Dodsworth on this subject? Yeah, I just, in, in your, in your planning, my comment would be, I think it's going to be all, all estimates now is that general public vaccination is all, in all likelihood, going to uh be in full swing this summer. And uh, that in my mind would make it doubtful that you could put fifty thousand people together by that time.
Yeah.
Um, the uh, but uh, what alternative may be to make the twenty-fifth anniversary in September a bigger deal? Because we may have uh very favorable trends on COVID by that time and be able to have a larger crowd. So if there was some way to plan something and have it flexible to scale up, I maybe that'd be an alternative.
Mm-hmm. Great idea.
Yeah.
Mr. Whalen.
So Mary, again, kudos for all the hard work you guys put into all of these events uh for the community. My, my thought is in the summer concert, assuming we may have some restrictions uh in terms of numbers. I, I, there must be some sort of technological thing where we could have somebody with a camera, put it on Zoom for even elderly folks or other folks who maybe can't get to the park and at least see it on a Zoom channel with the city and enjoy the music in the park, so.
Great, great idea. We can certainly do that.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Then Ms. Dodsworth, next subject.
The next subject is, I just give you an update on the South Sound Proud mural. Um, that starts on page ninety-four with the uh pictures on nine, page ninety-five. So this was something that was started in two thousand nineteen by our communications manager at the time, uh Bryn. And um, so she helped coordinate the grant and um worked on uh looking at, you know, on artists and locations. So um, it was a program that was being put together. The artist, the city received the grant. We were all ready to go. And then, of course, um, the ta, the pandemic came in. But um, the city is working with Phil Jensen, who's a, a artist. And he has come up with um the theme, which is Live Like the Mountain Is Out. And so that was part of why we picked uh American Lake Park as the location for the mural. A, we own the park, so we can paint the walls if we want. But secondly, it matches so perfectly because the mountain is there. I mean, the inspiration is there every day. If you look at the wall and it's on page um ninety-five, and I can share my screen if you're interested, but I think you probably all have it, is is that if you're standing with your back to the water and you're looking at the wall, you can see it's this big gray wall. And so the section to the left, which is onto the left of the stairs coming down, the whole, that whole wall will be the mural. And then you can see it's going to look like waterfalls coming down from the hillside. So when you look at the all you, from the water, really you just see the trees, the old growth forests. So you'll see this waterfall's coming down like it's cascading down the wall to the park. And it has the, the, their branding, which is Live Like the Mountain Is Out. And then, uh, and we know that there's going to be major improvements at American Lake Park. You know, if we receive the grants and we have council authorization to move forward, but that piece of wall will not be damaged or changed because the ADA access will be coming from the other side. So we're excited. The artist is excited. I have to tell you, the price is phenomenal for what we're paying this artist to do this mural based on the fact that we've recently been um costing out murals around the city with the Arts Commission and working with the school district and such. So this is a really beautiful opportunity at a pretty good rate to do that. So uh, would value your input, um, would need your approval to move forward. And um, just any comments that you have at this time.
Questions or comments for Ms. Dodsworth regarding the mural?
That's great.
Ms. Farmer?
How do we get you the approvals you need?
I beg your pardon?
How do we get you the approvals you need?
Um, we, I would say that you've approved the contract already or that we're moving forward. I would say council probably should provide direction that they like the mural and that we can move forward. Or I, I'm not sure if action is needed, but I would defer to the mayor to known actions needed. We've just nodding heads, thumbs up, love it, great idea. Go team.
Do we have the rights to reproduce it at another location if we want to or put it on a water tower?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure. I'll have to check on that. Um, we're buying the mural. I'm not sure about the rights. Um, I know the South Sound Proud is a, is a probably trademarked logo, but I'll check on that. But we can use like the photo of it or we can use it, reproducing it in that fashion for promotion, but um I'm not sure who owns the drawing, to be honest with you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Moss.
Yeah, quick question. Uh, Ms. Dodsworth, is this, you're talking about the mural on the wall? Are we going to have, does that include the one that's going to be transferable to?
This is a whole different project. This, this project was started in two thousand nineteen and it just sort of waited because we transitioned staff as well as the pandemic. The artists couldn't do it and we didn't have the contract then. So yeah, I'm sort of picking up the pieces from what started in night, two thousand nineteen. The other mural that I spoke about earlier, I apologize because it is confusing, is a completely different mural created by, by students that will be mounted, I don't know where yet. But it is done in panels, so that can be mobile. This is going to be painted on the wall, not mobile.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Your Honor, roll, Mary, next.
Last topic, uh, unless you have something else for me at the end. Um, back uh earlier in February, council um heard more about the um process to select an artist and to do the art at the Colonial Plaza. We uh decided, council decided, gave us direction to pick a new artist and move forward with a new project so that we had um a new way of doing that. We did, we staffed it, a ton of research, finding out what's the best way to do that. And of course, you always learn the best practices after you've made several mistakes. So this process is really tried and true. It's, uh, we've got a lot from, a lot of feedback from the state, from the city of Tacoma, who has a very rich history of doing public art. And so we have the process which we laid out for you. Um, but the first step was to do, have a stakeholders group, a subcommittee of select, of people to select. And so we're looking for, uh, we'll have a, we have a subcommittee of the Arts Commission, who's already been selected. They selected amongst themselves. And then we have, we're, are looking for two council members. Of course, Councilmember Whalen is our liaison at this point. Councilmember Bell was on the Arts Commission. She's since resigned and so. Uh, but we're looking for council to provide who they want the two reps to be, two or three, depending on what you think is best.
So I, I take the liberty of suggesting that Ms. Bell, who has just given up the slot on the Arts Commission, uh, be appointed to this task. Did I get, get it out of occurrence? We, she's.
I would love that. That would be great.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind staying on it because I've been with the process for some time. Have been the liaison, so.
Yeah, that would be my, my next suggestion if no one else, and we can go to three if somebody else is interested, but
Certainly.
Those two individuals have uh already been active participants, so I think it's appropriate. And to full disclosure, I, I was uh in my official capacity, asked to judge an art contest a couple of years ago uh at Lakewood Gardens. Uh, and in a blind test, I managed to pick the art submitted by one of the organizers of the contest. So I'm undefeated. I'm not going to try, I'm not going to try again.
All right.
All right. Got your people.
Thank you very much. And thanks everybody for your support. We're, we love working with you.
Thank you, Ms. Dodsworth, as always.
Actually, uh, Ms. Dodsworth, if uh you have a moment, would you like to give the council an update on the Fort Stilicon All-Access Playground?
Oh, sure. Sure. So um, starting today, we started pulling out pieces of the toddler play area at Fort Stilicon Park. As you know, that is a super amazing playground. Um, it's now, it, it, time flies fast. Fifteen years ago, that play, the playground was designed by you, installed by thousands of volunteers in literally a week. And just about everybody had their hands on it. It's amazing space. We've added to it over the years based on um just enhancements, but it's fifteen years old. The playground typically has the life of about ten years. That place is fifteen years old. I guess it's, it, it's been very well maintained. But we're taking out the toddler section and we're going to be replacing with an all abilities. And not just, oh, it's ADA accessible, but this playground is going to be all abilities. It's going to be accessible to anyone with limitations, mobility, sensory limitations. And it's not just for kids that have limitations. It might be um a parent or a guardian or a grandparent that wants to come and play at the playground. But, but if they have limitations, they aren't able to get in there and play. So um, the toddler pieces are being removed, that will be, being removed. Some of the little things will stay. Um, and then we'll be rebuilding it uh later this month and into the month of April. So um, we're excited about that. I think the pieces come in around the fifteenth of March and then we'll be doing that install. So uh, we're excited about that. It's going to be really cool and um we'll keep you informed.
Any questions? Well, thanks again. Back to Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Ms. Dodsworth. Appreciate your time this evening, as usual. If, uh, if you haven't figured it out, I just stay out of her way.
A force of nature.
That's good, that's very good advice. And actually, I would echo her and her team. They uh absolutely do a fantastic job. Um, you know, day in and day out, year in and year out. And uh, so just, uh, Mary, thank you and, 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 and your team.
We're happy to.
So uh, along the update that Ms. Dodsworth provided regarding special events, I did want to let you know the city of Lakewood and other cities here in Pierce County and actually by, you know, the whole state as a whole. You know, we've, we've been working through our local health department as well as Pierce County D E M. You know, to try and get an understanding from the state, what a phase three might look like. It's well aware we're currently in, in, in phase two. Um, unfortunately, uh, you know, we haven't been able to get a response from that, um, specifically from the State Department of Health. Um, however, we do have a commitment from our local health district that they'll keep pushing. Likewise, the city of Lakewood and other cities are going to keep pushing. Um, one of the things that the city of Lakewood and a number of other cities communicated last week was, you know, one of the primary reasons I would like to get an understanding of what phase three is going to look a lot like. It's because we're all in our planning phases for a number of special events across, you know, the consortium of cities here in the Puget Sound. So um, just want to let you know that um we are being, you know, I would say aggressive and trying to get some answers. But uh, so far, um, you know, the responses were in phase two and they're monitoring metrics. And hopefully sometime in the near future, we can um get into phase three. But again, what that looks like and what those metrics are, we, we, we don't know. Um, on Thursday evening, um, another Lakewood student, uh, actually, um, at the Clover Park um high school, Azalea Riviere was uh recognized as uh the Boys and Girls Clubs of South Puget Sound Youth of the Year, which includes Pierce, Thurston and Mason County. This is the second year in a row that a Lakewood student has been This is the second year in a row that a Lakewood student has been recognized. And, uh, unless there's any objection from the mayor and the council, you know, would like to, um, you know, recognize her at a future council meeting, just as you did, um, last year with, uh, with, um, last year's young man. He was actually from Lakes High School. So, uh, passing it around this year. So, um, unless there's any objection, we'll go ahead and, and coordinate with Ms. Rivera and, and get that scheduled. Um, something that's really, really exciting is, um, the city has, uh, completed its update of its hazard mitigation plan. And, uh, the good news is we were notified by both FEMA and the State Department of, of, of Emergency Management that they have been pre-approved. Uh, in order to get final approval, this legislative body, um, needs to accept it via resolution. A little bit of background information, these plans are updated every five years. Last time we did it was in 2015 and it's done in conjunction with Pierce County on a regional basis, by the way. The reason it wasn't updated in 2020 is that FEMA, you know, through the federal government, uh, provided all agencies a one-year extension. So that's why it's getting updated in 2021. Um, you know, most of the updates in the plan are, um, really just, you know, kind of minor updates as it relates to geography and demographics and things along those lines. Uh, for the city of Lakewood, the most significant update in the plan actually has to do with identifying a new hazard of high-speed rail coming through Lakewood. And unfortunately, that's the outcome of the, um, derailment that occurred, uh, several years ago of, of, of the, of the Amtrak, um, passenger train. Um, at this point in time, we're looking at, um, providing the city council an update of that plan as part of your April 12th study session. And then, um, if the council is so inclined, uh, you would have an opportunity to consider a resolution as, as part of your April 19th meeting. Um, and as I reported before, REI is, uh, looking to establish satellite offices throughout the Puget Sound area. It's part of their Future of Work Program where they have offices in closer proximity to where their employees live. Um, they actually, uh, signed a lease agreement, um, up in Issaquah last week. However, they are still very, very interested in Pierce County, including Lakewood. Uh, myself, our Economic Development Manager and Mayor Anderson met with, um, an REI representative as well as a representative Tacoma Pierce County E D B a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, so we continue to be in discussion with them. Um, one of the options that we're going to put out on the table is, you know, would you be interested in potentially renting a portion of, of City Hall? Um, they have expressed that they're looking for about thirty to sixty thousand square feet in all of Pierce County. It doesn't have to be in one location. Um, they are also looking at no more than five-year, um, lease terms. So, um, we're going to reach out to them and again, you know, identify some locations here in Lakewood, including again, potentially, um, our City Hall. Um, also, we have heard from Congresswoman Strickland that perhaps, um, her and her team are interested in expanding their footprint as, 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 as well. Um, and by the way, we do have plenty of space in this building to be able to, um, offer something like that. Um, Lakewood Drive, um, the road construction and sidewalk improvement project is, um, getting underway. And that's to, uh, fill the sidewalk gap on Lakewood Drive between Flet Creek and Silicon Boulevard. Do want to let you know that the contractor, um, requested that the speeding, um, in the, I'm sorry, the, um, the vehicle speeds in that zone be reduced from forty miles an hour to twenty-five miles an hour just because of the construction that is a very fast roadway. So our Public Works Engineering Director has gone ahead and do that. So, um, if you're driving through there and it's slow, that's why, um, there's, the, the project itself is expected to take about, take about two months. Uh, last week, uh, we were contacted by, um, the Home Ownership Center of Tacoma. And, um, they, uh, actually are a nonprofit, very similar to Habitat for Humanity. Uh, they focus on building and providing, um, affording affordable housing for folks in our community, uh, here in, in, in all of Pierce County. And, uh, so they are looking to have a groundbreaking ceremony, uh, sometime in March and have invited myself and the mayor and several other staff. And, um, they have also extended an offer, if the city council is available, to a groundbreaking ceremony, um, for two homes, two affordable homes that they are going to be building, um, in the nine thousand block of Washington Boulevard, um, Southwest. Uh, would like to point out that, um, the properties that they are building on were actually 2018 abatement, city abatement project, uh, addressing, uh, some derelict and old vacant buildings that had been there for a while. And again, it's a reflection of the success of our abatement program because without that, um, this nonprofit unlikely would be moving forward with building two new brand home, two new, brand new homes. So, um, look for an update on your calendar as we look to identify, um, a date in time here in the next, uh, week, 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 week or two. Um, at your meeting next week, um, one of the items we added to your agenda, and I had an opportunity to talk to Mayor Anderson about this, is to get an update from the consultants who are working on the South Sound Housing Affordabilities, uh, partnership or, um, what, um, SHAP, I don't know if there's, if they have a, if they actually, S S H A P. Uh, I don't know if they came up with actually, uh, uh, what that mean, what that says. I know what it means. It means South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. So, um, we're, um, going to schedule that as part of your study session next week, which is actually, um, good timing because Mr. Buwer and his team will also be providing an update on the annual housing report for the city of Lakewood. Um, one of the things I want to point out in the annual housing report is that the, um, average rents in Lakewood is now the second lowest in all of Pierce County. And the only place, um, where the rents are lower is actually a spinaway by five dollars. And so our average rents are one thousand two hundred and, um, I think sixty dollars and theirs is one thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. But I think as we all know, um, Spanaway is now becoming the hotspot, um, for, um, um, folks actually migrating from King County into Pierce County. And actually, Mr. Buwer's report shows that one of the driving factors of increased housing costs in Pierce County is that migration from, from King County. But again, um, our housing costs are much lower than everywhere else, including Parkland, by the way. And, um, I think we attribute that, you know, to a number of factors, including, you know, the rental housing safety program that this body put in place several years ago, um, to ensure that existing housing, um, stays and does not get torn down. And then you don't have that proverbial gentrification, um, occurring. So, um, I think a good reflection on, on, on the policies that this body has, has, has put in place. But again, Mr. Buwer will be providing a more detailed report on that. Uh, last week I had mentioned that, um, Senator, uh, Murray had, uh, reached out to us and that she was gathering information on infrastructure project priorities from a number of public agencies ac- across Washington State. Um, I had, I had a conversation with a number of my colleagues and, um, um, I think Lakewood, I think we were kind of in a short list of, of, of agencies that she had reached out to. So we followed up with her and, uh, we provided, um, three projects valued in total of eighteen point seven million dollars. And, um, I know I sent you a note earlier today, so if you have any questions about that, um, let me know. Again, the Senator, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the Senator, she noted that, you know, she's just trying to get an understanding of the size of the issues, the infrastructure needs that, that, that communities have. And, um, her goal and objective is, once the COVID nineteen relief package, which by the way, passed out of the House this weekend, um, is in place and, you know, passes through the Senate and, and gets to the president's desk, that she would then like to initiate an infrastructure package. So that's her motivation. And so whether or not these projects are, are, are funded or not, or other projects that we want to put forward, um, still to be determined. Um, also, as I had mentioned, um, it could be that this is also setting the foundation for bringing back earmarks, um, that have not been around since about 2010 or 2000, 2011. So hopefully more to come, to come on that. Um, last Friday afternoon, myself and the school superintendent, Ron Banner, we had our monthly meeting. We, as always, we, there's a number of, um, issues that we touch base on. Um, three that I'd like to mention, um, the first is, we shared with them as a follow-up to the joint city council board meeting, a, um, draft resolution that was developed by our team here at the city for each legislative body to consider that expresses a commitment of both the city council and the school board to value in diversity, equity and, and inclusion. He was very, very appreciative of that. He's going to have his team look at it and internally share it with the board. And, uh, he's hoping that, um, you know, if there's any changes, we'll go ahead and work collaboratively on that. And, uh, based on his, um, uh, school board's calendar, he's thinking that he'd be able to bring it forward, um, for their review and consideration sometime in, in, in April. And I think it would be good for this body to do it at the same time as well as, as, as April. So more, more to come on that. Um, we also checked in on the, uh, Joint Facilities Cooperative Use Agreement, which kind of took, went to the back burner, you know, the school district and, you know, the city. We had some other issues we were dealing with last year. Um, and so, um, there, there were a couple of fine tuning items that we needed to address, um, actually as it relates to COVID nineteen. And so, um, we're going to get, where each agency is going to give it one more review and we're hoping to bring that forward here in the next month or two as well for each respective legislative body, um, to put in place. And then lastly, um, the school superintendent did communicate to me that they are bringing back, uh, school resource officers, um, into their high school. And I know in the past they've also used them in the junior high. Um, and so, um, um, Lakewood Police Department is work, working with the school district on that. So once they open up the high schools, um, they, they would like to have, um, S, SROs onsite. Um, one of the updates that LPD and the school district staff are also working on is a couple of years ago, there was a change in state legislation, you know, specifying the roles of SROs, um, and really what SROs are not supposed to be doing, which is, um, you know, stepping in and doing the work of school administrators and teachers and things, and things along those lines and, uh, kind of creating a, a bright line there. Um, it is something that, you know, the school district and the city have practiced in the past. Um, but again, um, we're just going to do a walkthrough, talk through on that to make sure that each agency is on, is on the same, same frequency. Um, lastly, I'd like to report that, um, our sales tax, uh, came in, um, over budget, um, by a considerable, a considerable amount. Um, however, it was below a little bit. It was essentially flat compared to 2019. So the good news is we exceeded budgetary, um, expectations, which is a reflection of, of our very, very good financial policies. Um, however, it did not grow compared to 2019. And going back the last three or four years, you know, our sales tax has grown by a considerable amount. So, um, wh- while we did meet budgetary or exceed budgetary expectations, um, the, the COVID nineteen pandemic did have, have an impact on the bottom line of certainly taxable retail sales here in Lakewood, um, because we did not get that bump in growth from 2009, nineteen. Um, Ms. Kraus and her team are in the process of closing out the books for 2020. And, um, she expects to be able to provide this body an update on, on, on the city's 2020, uh, finances as part of a, um, presentation scheduled for your April twenty-sixth study session. So, uh, with that, that's my report. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Coffield, Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Coffield, you, and on the, uh, uh, hazards plan, uh, and you mentioned that the, oh, it was going to incorporate, uh, the, the, the hazards associated with the high-speed trains to be able to go and do that. I guess the, the type of hazards that this plan addressed is, uh, is it also going to, uh, address the, uh, the impact of the expansion of the floodplain? Um, that, that, that has occurred during, they, they came out at the last, uh, review of that, which is in the interim time since the last time this planned, or is that a different kind of hazard?
Yeah, um, I don't recall seeing that in there, Councilmember Branstadter, but it is a very, very long document. Um, um, so as I reflect back looking at it, uh, I don't recall that. But let me, let me double check on that to see if that's in there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Don't see any hands up, so we'll move to council comments. Ms. Bell?
Hi, everybody. We have a little tricky audio situation up here, so I'm kind of hearing myself echo. It's very great to see all of you and I just wanted to say thank you so much for your vote of confidence. And I am very excited to get started and to join all the wonderful things that you guys have started already. And I would like to reach out to each one of you to set up some time to, uh, talk to you, get to know you and just, uh, have a little bit of face-to-face time in these times that are not so face-to-face. So I just want to say thank you and, um, you've all been very welcoming already.
Thank you and glad to have you onboard. I have had the opportunity to, uh, visit with Patty already and I encourage you to, I said some time, uh, non-virtual time up, uh, to, uh, to meet with her. Maybe it's mask-to-mass time, it's the face-to-face. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Bell, welcome. I'm looking forward to meeting you. I've heard good things about your work and so I'm excited about the opportunity to work with you. So looking forward to that. I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I, again, I'd also extend a welcome to, to Ms. Bell. Uh, we're, uh, glad to have you with us and making us whole again. Uh, you know, look forward to, uh, to getting a chance to have that conversation with you, to be able to, uh, go, go and do that. That, uh, I, uh, don't really have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Um, Ms. Farmer?
Well, I'll jump on the bandwagon and say congratulations and welcome, Councilmember Bell. So fun to be able to say that. And it's not so long ago that I was the new council member. And so I, I was nervous for you today, but you did a fantastic job and it was great to see your family here. And so that's, that's super exciting and I'm just glad not to be the new person anymore. So yay. Um, the only thing I would like to mention, Mr. Mayor, is I am, um, pleased to be able to participate in a school board, um, or a school district, uh, conversation tomorrow evening as they're putting together an equity policy. And they're having a, a couple of targeted community conversations around that. And so I'll, uh, be participating. So I'll, I'll give you guys an update.
Mr. Bulkey?
Welcome, Patty. Uh, glad to have you onboard. Uh, Saturday, the only thing I've got is Saturday. It was a beautiful Saturday morning and I went out with the folks in the North Lakewood Neighborhood Association on their street cleanup of the Onyx, the portion kind of on the west side of Oak Brook here, the new portion actually. And there was a, a bit of garbage, uh, unfortunately. And I, I, I didn't, I haven't seen much walking, but when you're going down the street and actually looking for litter and they found things like batteries and hubcaps, we ended up with a few bags. But I really do thank a neat group of people, uh, who are, who are consistent in their, their, their cleanup efforts on that, that location of the street. And I really do appreciate that the city is so supportive because the city provides all the, they provide gloves, they provide the little, uh, litter picker-upper things, which I'm sure there's some fancy name for. And, um, and then they pick up, the, the city picks up the garbage. So, um, I'm, you know, I'm hoping that as we kind of get things back to normal that that program can, can get going again and, and grow, uh, citywide. I don't know how many of those that we have going on or how many are active. Uh, but hopefully they'll, they'll, they'll really start to move along because I think it's a good way for people to get together. You know, we just, we just basically just walk the sidewalks and we're chatting and, and doing stuff. And there were some kids and, but I, and I, and I really do appreciate the city's efforts and assistance on those two. So, and I, I know the, the neighborhood association people do also. So that's all I got.
Right. Mr. Wayland?
Thank you. Uh, a great congratulations to you, Patty. We are so excited to have you onboard and look forward to working with you on the Arts Commission to getting that project over the finish line that we've been working on for some time. So looking forward to, to sitting, uh, closer to you once we get through this crazy COVID, uh, timeframe. Uh, the only major thing I have to report on, I attended the Lakewood Gardens Board Retreat on Saturday. The principal, uh, objective was to discuss their strategic plan for the next few years. They're pretty bullish on it. One of the big items is a forthcoming capital camp. One of the big items is a forthcoming capital campaign to completely redo, renovate and make historically significant the old carriage house, which used to be, for those of you who've been over there, the, kind of the garden uh, shop, if you will. And we went through this really interesting historical overview of what it was back in nineteen twelve and how the iterations came to where it is today and uh, what they plan to do down the road. And it's a two-point-seven-million-dollar lift. They're getting some significant grant funding for part of that and they'll be, you know, certainly going out to the community for some additional funds. But the exciting thing to me is that there's a group of folks trying to do more to make Lakewood uh, more accessible, uh, more culturally significant and to continue to invest in things that bring more people into Lakewood to see the wonderful things that the city has to offer. So uh, they're very bullish on the city and the uh, street improvement projects that will be right at their front door. And that was brought up as a very positive um, impact to Lakewood Gardens and its mission for the, for the community. So anyway, more to follow on that, but always good news to see people doing things that move the city forward.
All right, thank you. A couple of things, uh, Tuesday, I was uh, one of the city uh, participants in a meeting with the leadership and lobbyists for the uh, Master Builders Association. They are generally uh, complimentary of the city of Lakewood and I think their concerns are basically directed at state issues where, and maybe some other municipalities where uh, the unintended consequences of additional regulations, the new building code raised the price and, uh, of housing and uh, it, it's kind of counterproductive to the uh, affordable housing and missing middle aspects of development. The uh, rental assistance and federal and, and state aid. Uh, the package that passed out of the House, as you may know, the US House uh, would give uh, Lakewood fourteen million dollars for COVID-related relief. One thing we probably can't spend it on or won't be able to spend it on, not that it'd be illegal, is rental assistance. Uh, and the reason for that is that rental assistance money is coming from many directions with slightly different qualifications. And Pierce County may have over one hundred million dollars. Between thirty-five, thirty, thirty-five million dollars, the state is sending to housing providers uh, about fifty million dollars in the federal package that may come on a, a, a kind of per capita type basis, a hangover of about nine million dollars, I believe, uh, from uh, prior grants. And a state pass-through of twenty million dollars. Just, just a lot of money there. And if you add it up, we, the county passed out maybe twenty million dollars in the first go-around and that was a, a real lift to get a hundred million dollars through the pipes. The county director for Human Services doesn't know if there'll be the demand for that, but frankly, it's, it's so high. And uh, so to duplicate that, we're uh, would probably be uh, counterproductive. We need to look at uh, other ways to uh, use that within our community. Uh, we know some of them, like the uh, backfill of some revenue uh, loss, which is going to be allowed if the Senate doesn't change that. Uh, but the, one of the tough things is it's one-time money. Most of, there are restrictions on what you can do capital-wise, big restrictions generally. No, there may be a crack. When, we'll see what the final bill is. There may be a crack which would allow us to, in some way, assist organizations like the uh, housing group that Mr. Caulfield's talked about or Habit Hat for Humanity and, and working around the edges to assist them and doing something more permanent. Um, so we've got to look for those opportunities, but more to come and the rules change uh, weekly. Uh, but the, it doesn't look like that huge influx of uh, rental assistance money is going to change uh, dramatically. And on a personal note, I encourage you all, at the first opportunity, get your COVID shots. I got my second one this week. Uh, one of the advantages of being old. And uh, that was followed two days later by the sixth grandchild. So it was a good week. And uh, even though uh, her mother is an elected official, she got uh, a PDC exemption. It doesn't have to file this year. So we have a uh, closed session coming up. We will adjourn the meeting as opposed to recessing it, which we do on uh, executive sessions. So we will adjourn the city council meeting and move to a closed session pursuant to R C W forty-two, thirty, one forty, four A, related to collective bar, bargaining. So Mr. Caulfield, unless you have something further, we are adjourned. Uh, please go to the secure closed meeting site.